Ask me to spend this about how much money are we talking about? To put this like.
Well, for the, what we're responsible for is bringing the sewer line across, you know, the highway underneath the highway to McCoys side. And right now, we're looking, like I said, about seventy-five thousand. I've got the engineer study underway and once we get that study, and we're basically getting the work done.
Okay, uh, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I can talk about the cost of that sewer line design.
Okay, please, yes, sir, you can approach the board, please. He's a mayor, but I'm here for the discussion and I'm asking him for my part of my discussion.
Well, from the first days of our discussions, we've tried to be as open as possible, so we're not trying to do any negotiating that isn't, you know, up for examination. And I'll talk about the sewer line a little bit. You know, with any one of these engineering projects, the closer you get to actually a, an engineered plan, the more you know about how much it is going to cost. So where our engineers are looking at things like, where is the infall on the line? Where is the infall in the manhole, the different little details? And as you get these details, you know more about how much it's going to cost you. What we have, what you're voting on today is a resolution to allow the city manager to enter into this agreement. We have on a parallel path been trying to refine that agreement down to be more and more specific as to costs and what the obligations and protections for the different parties. One thing that we have put in this agreement, and mind you, the agreement is not signed off on yet, but we are very comfortable with putting a not to exceed number on the sewer line or the EDC's portion. Now, this is again, not the city's, but the EDC would not be on the hook for any more than one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Now, if the EDC can do it for less than that, that's great. And they've got their engineers and their contractors and their budget numbers and they're feeling like they can do it for less than that. But if it goes over, if we run into unforeseen circumstances, McCoys is on the hook for everything over a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Now, as far as the road goes, that's a little harder to put a fine, a discrete number on because the city's crews, in my understanding, is actually going to install the road base within the asphalt, construct a curl on the north side of the road. So where they, where the EDC sources the base material and the asphalt, that makes it very difficult to say exactly how much that road is going to cost and then what is the city's labor portion worth or, you know, because you're not actually writing a check for that. So it, it's difficult to pin it down and say not to exceed some not to exceed number. We're comfortable getting to that spot because everybody wants to go into a business deal knowing exactly how much it's going to cost them.
Well, that's more understandable when you say it that way, but when you say we're working on something, we're working, well, that doesn't give you a favor like if something is stupid come up, but when you explain it for me, it's understandable.
But you understand, everything changes, the fuel cost, everything cost, cost on any type of improvements change, weekly, monthly, yearly. So if you were to give us a cost now, who says three months from now, it's either going to grow up or come down?
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying.
Both parties at this point have the opportunity to negotiate the agreement. So if the city and their portion on the road says, hey, let's tweak it down or this amount, and McCoys says, well, I'm not comfortable with that, you know, we still have the opportunity to tweak that. We've got in the resolution some very broad parameters to say this is overall the intent of the agreement and Amy's authorized to enter into that agreement.
Colonel, one thing, if we take McCoys out of the equation, adding infrastructure on 181, isn't that a positive for Florisville regardless of whether McCoys was in the picture or not?
Well, exactly. What it does is it opens up that on the other side of 181. And what we're trying to do is bring more retail into the city. And I think though, what we're spending is a significant amount of money, and I agree with all the folks, you know. But I think that in the long run, we benefit because not only because of bringing in McCoys, but it opens up the rest of the property for other give-all, other different kind of stores, you know, retail, different things that could come in, and it, it benefits the whole town. And it also continues to make, put us in a position where more people are coming into Florisville to shop from the surrounding communities, the larger communities. And in the long run, it puts us in a position where we're still open for business, we want to attract new businesses coming into Florisville, and I think that's a positive for the city, it's a positive for the county.
You know, one of the arguments that we've always heard is take, do infrastructure first, and it seems like we're trying to do infrastructure and we still have the arguments that we're, we're trying to build infrastructure. Any other discussion from the audience? Yes, sir, Fred.
Mayor, Council, I think it's important that we understand that the lawsuit has absolutely nothing to do with whether we can afford what we're doing here with McCoys or not. The fact is a totally red herring.
Who's going to pay the legal fees?
Well, the amount that's involved would not even come close to interfering with what we're proposing or committing to do here. And I don't see any other expenditure coming out of that lawsuit other than the, the defense of the people that should be defended because we're doing our civic duty for the city and doing it as best as we can.
And you're doing a good job, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, so you already had your one minute. Anybody else? Have not any other discussion, council? Are we ready for a vote?
A vote is, man, that was to make money, first you have to spend money. So saying that, I make a motion to adopt a resolution, a agreement with the city of Florisville setting forth requirements and contractual promises of the various entities involving the construction of a McCoys building supply store.
All right, okay. Let's make the motion.
I second.
Morones made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, because the motion carries five zero.
My counsel, Gomez, objected his resignation. That occurred, I believe, August twentieth, and so there was a ten-day clock running from that point. Once the ten days expired and the city council not nominated a replacement, the state law always refers back to the city charter. City charter only had a provision for ten days to nominate the replacement. After that point, the term will continue until it's up for election November twenty-thirteen or the vacancy is created by operation of another constitutional provision which has not arisen yet.
Did he just write from there?
Oh, or there's a special election called within a hundred-and-twenty days due to the term being over two years and by virtue of the move act, moving the election six months. That still has to be looked into because we're not sure if there's an exception under Senate Bill one hundred that passed, and frankly, that was brought to our attention this morning and have not had time to do the legal research on that.
Rule thirty is a memorandum, Mr. Morones, get all of the council members and all the public on what was filed this morning.
Can just move on to item aye. Consideration action to consider award a city to file.
Aye. On the city's web page, and these two documents are available there. You have the budget revised dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, and in that budget for the approved FY eleven-twelve, it states that the cities can receive eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars in property. And this is not citizens' input, I'm speaking on behalf of the councilman Guerrero.
No, sir, you're speaking, you're citizens, you're speaking citizens' input.
No, we're giving it as a presentation here by the city council.
And we're not looking.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miller is not part of our staff, this is not a presentation.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner, McCoys not part of our staff, but he's giving his presentation, now he's giving the presentation in the.
You have fifteen seconds, sir.
What is on the agenda?
What's wrong?
My concern is the variations in the approved budget. There are three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars of extra money in the approved budget for FY eleven-twelve. When did this council amend that budget? That's my real question. When did the current fiscal year budget get amended? And if it didn't, because there's no record of that amendment, who authorized the city manager to do that? That's a direct violation of the city charter. And furthermore, if these adjustments were made to the current fiscal year budget without the approval to the council, all of the proposed budget is in question.
Thank you.
Mayor, city staff is prepared and has been prepared to answer these questions with Mr. Miller. If we could come up on a, a professional level, we're more than happy to explain, and this council has been aware of the path that we have taken this year. Everything all was presented and all the changes were proposed and directed by this council to be made, were made, and those are the changes that Mr. Miller does not understand. This council has been aware of everything that the city manager and his staff has done.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Why do you always cut this man off, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Mayor? I mean, I know we're not here, we're, we're for the discussion, but this is all to benefit the city of Florisville and their taxpayers, and they want answers, all they want is a simple answer. And you, be quiet, or you let it go on. We can't do that to the taxpayer. This is, this is their city, they pay the taxes, and why do we always just tell them shut up? Or you shut up. You shut up.
The office of the city manager never disrespects.
Well, why don't we let this man finish? Why don't we let this man finish his, what is the person that he has that we asked him to do? Why?
He's not on the agenda.
Do we tell people here to shut up or they want, we want to hear what one of you say?
Is there a motion on the decision that we did to provide the presentation?
We don't want to do it.
Motion regarding item Jake.
Well, for one. Mr. Ray, if you may, I suggest, if there's some question, and I think this is for fairness to all the parties and for fairness to the public, if there's some question, it was my recommendation, the management's recommendation that we post the budget with as required, and as GMS four last year, propose the budget with the city secretary when the budget proposal came forward. And if the question is what's happened with the budget since that date, I think it's simple to resign by the manager, explains to everybody if we go into the budget year, how the budget has evolved from that date.
Well, I believe Mr. Morones and councilmen, you don't have the opportunity to be part of the budget process.
And I did come to one of the meetings and somebody didn't show up. Okay, don't, I didn't miss one of my meetings.
If there's discussions, if there's questions regarding the budget process or the budget, can we discuss that at budget time?
But what if a citizen has a question?
He could ask you directly. He was asking you one.
We're asking, I'd ask you.
Mayor, you are correct, and I'm going to give you the, I'm going to give, I'm going to give you the dates of the budget process that we had that is open to the public. Citizens' input, June twelfth, twenty-twelve, budget workshop, June twenty-first, twenty-twelve, budget workshop, July tenth, twenty-twelve, budget workshop, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve. All of these meetings are open to the public, they're open to our council, and every, each and every meeting, the city manager and staff ask this council, do you have any questions? Ask the citizens in attendance, do you have any questions? If you have any questions, feel free to come into city hall, visit with our controller, visit with our finance staff, and we'll take them there.
Also, on this side of blue, told our attorney that the mayor has agreed to last year's budget and in fact, effective tax rate, is that correct? Is that correctly?
In our discussions on southern lawsuit, we did have discussion about that.
The mayor does, mayor, the mayor agreed. The mayor has not set the tax rates, the council has set the tax rate. Is there an action on item Jake?
Question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, please, I'm a little bit confused at, I understand public hearings and also workshops, can you please clarify for me? Is there citizen input to asking questions and will answers be given and is there a time limit at either one of those events?
At public hearing, what you're having in a few minutes, yes, I'll, we can answer some of your questions, yes.
And is there a time limit?
I don't think there's a time limit on public hearings, no.
And then budget workshop, can citizens ask questions?
Sure.
Will there be answers?
The budget workshop's already passed, man.
I understand, I, I want clarification though, for budget workshop, is there an exchange of communication, questions and answers from the council, or is it a one-way communication?
It depends, at some meetings, there's, has been dialogue.
Can you tell me what it depends on so I'll know for future?
I think it just depends on the discussion item at that time.
So some discussion items, there's not a two-way communication, but other discussion items, it's a one-way?
It depends if we want to answer it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It depends if we want to answer it. I mean.
Oh.
You know, to answer your question though, let me, let me just say one thing, we're, we're talking about a tax rate, we're talking about a budget that is extremely, extremely tight. One of the lowest tax rates, I'll say it again, one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Texas. I believe somebody said on one of your blogs, that it was the fourth lowest in the state. We're trying to improve infrastructure here along 181. We get all sorts of comments and controversy regarding water and sewer.
Yeah, all I wanted to know is clarification.
Well, those are the facts.
Is there a timeline?
These are the facts.
And also, is there, is there an input back and forth?
We welcome input, we welcome input.
And so will I get answers if I come to the budget workshop?
Man, the budget workshop's already passed, it was a summer.
I understand there's for future, so I understand the process.
Well, you would have to ask the next mayor, I won't be the next mayor.
What is the process now for budget workshops?
Okay, I would rather like to get back on the topic of discussion here.
That is the question.
I've answered your question.
My question.
Okay, let's move on to item Jake.
As said, and the taxes, the city's offices said, because the tax valuation for two thousand and eleven-twelve was eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, plus or minus what we had to take out for tip and for commissions to the appraisal. And as I look at this proposed budget, we are projected to receive four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred dollars that will be used under the general fund and another three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars that will be used for debt service, and forgive me, I haven't done the math, but it is not what this budget says was budgeted for this year, which is nine-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars, that seems to be in conflict with the budget that was approved for last year. It seems to be eighty-eight thousand dollars more. And then I see that same problem again with sales tax. We look at the FY eleven-twelve budget, it says the city has approved for its budget to receive one-point-one-four million dollars in sales. But this budget says, no, 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 it was one-point-four-two-five million dollars. But yet the projections are only one-point-one-seven, very close to what was originally approved. I've gone back through my meeting minutes, I've looked at the agenda, there has been no budget amended. When did this get offered? And more importantly, if this budgeted numbers, which are going to be unrealized revenue, were the basis for making projections into the future, I'm concerned. Particularly if this council did not authorize a budget adjustment, I, in my understanding of the law, that's illegal. I'm not a lawyer, but I have some real concerns about it. Now, I will go on to some other of the questions that I asked during a very, very civil meeting that I had with Ms. Pollak and Ms. Pilner and Mr. Johnson regarding the budget. I specifically asked questions about the hotel motel tax that we are projecting to receive three-hundred thousand dollars this year. I thought that was kind of an interesting number. I asked where it came from, and I was told that, oh, well, we base it on this and that. I said, I understand that there are calculations, I would like to see them. I was assured by the city manager and the administration division director, I think that's the title today, that while we're working on those numbers, we'll get them to you. I guess because I posted on the blog, I'm not afforded answers to my questions. I find that highly unusual.
You stick to the budget process.
Again, that's, this budget, it was a projected three-hundred thousand dollars of hotel motel taxes, it was inconsistent with the historical numbers, and I asked for the calculation. I would like to see those, how that number was calculated.
Cherry, keep in mind some of the questions that he has, so he can answer those things.
Well, we had this meeting, I was told that this was a process that was being worked on and that I could have those answers, and I believe that meeting was about five weeks Can you tell me when the budget was amended?
It was never amended.
Sorry, if you're talking about the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget, we haven't even adopted it yet.
No, I'm talking about the property tax and sales tax numbers that are listed in this current budget for the current fiscal year that are different from the approved budget that is online. If the city was not, the city's current fiscal year budget was not amended, how did we increase these numbers by three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars worth of revenue that's going to be unrealized? When did that happen?
It happens again that you just do not read this budget correctly. If the comptroller that was contracted during all these processes and that had presented to this council, city up here, of the changes that were required by the new auditing firm, then you would understand this budget and this Pollak will be more than happy to understand, to, to explain that to you again.
The audit does, has nothing to do with what the council approves as expenditures. The audit is of actual expenditures, city manager, I understand that much of bookkeeping. What I am asking is if the city council authorized the city to budget the receipt of eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars in property tax and one-point-one-four million dollars in sales tax, who then authorized the change in that approved amount? The city charter very clearly states that those kinds of changes to the current, to any fiscal year budget must be made by amendment to the budget by the council, that has not occurred.
Mr. Miller, I may. The nine-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars is showing on the report that's on the website. If you look here, it's the same breakdown that is here, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eighteen thousand, thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand, that comes out to nine-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand. You'll see this is the same worksheet that is off the website. Again, you've got those numbers, they come up to the same.
Okay, how about the one-point-four-two-five million?
Sales tax is broken down, you've got the sales tax that comes in and the street maintenance tax.
But street maintenance tax is listed separately on this report.
That's correct. A lot of things are listed separately because of all of the funds that were set up after the audit. And so once you add those numbers together, they do match, they're on both sheets as I've shown you here, and I'll pull the sales tax.
For the property tax.
Correct.
But the sales tax is broken down separately on this general fund as revenue, just like the projected revenue for property taxes is broke up, you only have four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand here, but then you add the three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand here, and that's where you come up with that number.
That's correct. That's the split between the M and O and the INF.
I understand that.
Okay.
But the sales tax is listed separately here as one-point-four-two-five million, but then the street maintenance tax is listed as another separate amount.
Right, and if you look here, this is the breakdown on the sheet, and you've got one-point-one-four on here, and then you add the two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, which is your street maintenance tax, and it comes up to a total of the one-point-four-two-five. So the breakdown and the worksheet, the way that Tom did it, you have to, you have to use the worksheet schedule followed, it follows the sheets that you're looking at there, and it actually breaks them down by line item.
Very well, I see that.
And the addition can be done.
I see that, and this was a simple answer to your question. Now, can we go to the hotel motel tax? Can I have that explanation?
Cherry, the hotel motel tax, I know that you find a word on it, could you explain that?
What I asked for was the calculations that were used.
Now, Mr. Miller, one of the things that I did want to ask you is the amount that you're using, I think we figured out, what, what is the percentage of collection amount that you're using to come up with your calculation? You came up with the calculation that you sent to us, that you, they thought the projected number would be.
No, I didn't give you any projections. What I gave you were the actuals that I had pulled from the comptroller's website. There were no projections in there.
Okay.
Okay? What I questioned.
Let me, let me just explain, because when we went back and looked, you gave us a projection of eighty-seven, eighty-seven million, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in total sales.
No, what I gave you were the actual numbers that were pulled from the comptroller's website, I did not make any projections.
One of the things that I wanted to clarify with you, just to make sure that you're using the correct numbers, because we found out on the website for the hotel motel taxes percent is the normal number used to collect hotel motel tax on. They do give you the option as a city to do an ordinance or resolution to add additional percentages on their Florisville that seven percent.
I understand that.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that.
And the numbers that I used were based on the payments made to the city of Florisville, not estimates or projections. These were the actual payments that were made to the city of Florisville. And the concern that I had was twofold. One, the city is projected to receive two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in hotel motel tax in the first two quarters of the fiscal year is where some, and I, forgive me, I don't have my calc, my numbers with me, but it was some ninety thousand dollars, okay? And your projection goes from ninety thousand and a half a year to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, and you said you had done some calculations based upon the new openings of new hotels, okay, which, these reports that I saw included Eagle Ford Inn and included the other hotels that are in here, La Quinta had yet to open, and I don't know if it's open yet.
It has not, no, sir.
Okay, and the Holiday Inn Express has not opened, and the other hotel has not opened. So we have no new hotels, okay, in the last six months of the year. So how do we go from ninety thousand dollars in the first six months of the year to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars? The map didn't seem to make any sense to me, and I wanted to see those calculations. Secondly, if we're going to go from a budgeted amount of ninety thousand dollars to, and projected receipts of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, how does that increase to three-hundred-thousand dollars? Particularly when we have the law that says if, if your hotel stay extends ten consecutive days, you don't pay hotel motel tax beyond the ten days. And in talking to the hotel owners, be it Mr. Yansky's Texas Lodges or Raj's Best Western or Eagle Ford Inn, that's the majority of their customers.
And they can choose to do that one way or the other.
So again.
Let me, let me start with the ninety thousand dollar explanation, it was a directive from the council that part of the hotel motel tax money would be given to the foray that's listed that way in the budget. Ninety thousand dollars is not the total amount of hotel motel tax collected overall. It was the amount that was placed in the city budget of the total amount that would be collected for this year. So it's not the total amount.
Again, the budget piece, I'm not questioning for the current fiscal year, it is the projected number of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. If we received ninety thousand dollars, and it's eighty-some of thousand and change, I believe, in the first two quarters, okay, from the comptroller's office, and here we are, it's September thirteenth, and no new hotel has opened up to cause more revenue in hotel motel tax, how are we going to go from ninety thousand in six months to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand in twelve months? The map just didn't seem to jive with me. The math just didn't seem to jive with me.
Again, the explanation on the 90,000 would have been-
Okay, let me just explain though. I went today on the comptroller's office and I got the last three quarters. As of right now, we have collected over 2 million in the taxable receipt. That means the city's portion of that is currently at 159,000 and we're going at the seven percent. So, are we going to be at a shortfall? Probably. Are we still collecting? Yes, we still have to finish out this quarter and finish it out. So, I mean, coming up with that number is reasonable at this point, since we have collected over 159,000.
Well, 159,000 over three quarters is 53,000 a quarter. So you add 53,000 to 159, it's still only 212,000. We've overshot our mark substantially here.
Are you talking about forecasting? Forecasting part of it?
Yeah, and the question that I asked was what was the basis for the forecast? You said, and Ms. Pollak assured me that there was a calculation and a financial model that was flawed. That's all I've asked to see, is that calculation and that model.
And we can get that because that forecast is, is very obtainable due to La Quinta opening and it will be online in addition to the other hotels. As you can tell, the one by the Exxon is moving pretty quick. Any monies that are not expended in this year roll over and add to the total on next year.
And there were monies left over from the fiscal budget the prior year that rolled into the 240,000 amount for this year.
Again, I understand all of that. What I'm asked to see were the calculations. Comment about the budget if we're going to go through a new financial reporting method. And we're going to post both of these on the website, okay, to prevent confusion. I think there should be some notes. Furthermore, the proposed budget that is on the website is missing several pieces of important information. These are things that we've talked about before, which one is debt? What is the debt obligations of the city? That's not online.
And we've been waiting for it to go before council, before it was placed online. It will be online as of today, since the council has received the packet.
So this is the first that the council has received with that?
The packet's been, has been ready.
Because of the lack of forms and the lack of the council meeting, this has been prepared for some time.
Yes. And, and back to the explanation on the budget, the differences in it, Mr. Miller, that was explained by our comptroller at our workshops for the budget.
Again-
Leaving in detail as to how the new forms would be compared to the old forms.
I understand that it was done at the meeting, but for those citizens that don't attend the meetings, that simply can only go to the website, these are two very, very confusing documents. Some, particularly when you look at the, when you look at this proposed budget and you start to go through these pages, and this was something you explained to me in the office, but as you look at it, there are a bunch of blanks in the current year. And that was one of my first questions. Why are all of these blanks on this budget? And when you explained it, oh, okay, now I understand. But a simple cover letter to somebody who is downloading and looking at this document to explain some very obvious questions and some various, very obviously conflicted numbers, okay, would be of the greatest ease to the people when they start to look at this.
And one of the other things that we would regret on our end, Mr. Miller, is that if you have sat with us and you understand that, that you relay that information to everybody that you know-
I have-
-instead of misinforming.
Be careful. Be careful, we call misinformation.
I am very careful.
Okay. Jim, was there anything else regarding the budget? If not, you can allow for someone else to comment.
Yeah, I have several more comments about this budget. This is a four-plus-million-dollar budget. It can't be questioned in just a simple one or two comments. I have some real concerns and these are more directed towards the city manager. As I look at the current fiscal year and we go to the next fiscal year, and the allotments versus the expenditures. Now, I recognize that the city charter authorizes the city manager to take the allotments, for example, and I'm just going to pull an arbitrary number, if $500,000 was allocated to the operation of the police department. And he didn't need 500,000 to run the police department, he only needed 300,000. He could take that 200,000 and put it in parks or put it in administration or in other department and that action does not have to come before the council. That's how I understand the city charter. It's not right?
The charter mail, usually that's county, county and that's kind of my little brother.
Okay, well, as I look at this for the current fiscal year, budgeted amounts versus what the projected expenditures are, and I will round the numbers, administration, 1.01 million in budget, 1.3 million in expenditures. Municipal court is going to be under, 135,000 in budgeted, 127,000 in expenditures. Police department, 1.13 million, 1.05 in expenditures. As a matter of fact, all departments, with the exception of administration and the mayor and city council are projected to be under budget. That allows for the other two departments to be over budget, okay? What steps are being taken in the next fiscal year so that we don't have this having to take money from police and fire and parks to allow the administration to cover their expenditures?
The steps that were passed of the council is to limit the use of legal and the use of professional. And that's where the overages have come from, legal and professional, audits and lawsuits.
Again, audits and lawsuits, Jim.
Well, the city- Please. And that is, we talked about, and I think we all talked about it at various times, but it shouldn't go back. We talked about the importance, and I was the one that presented it, at least at one point, that we have this important job called comptroller. We have enough money involved in the city to where the role of the comptroller is key. You've got FDIC, you've got 4A, we've got numerous departments, okay? And we've got enough complexity because of interagency. I think you read the audit closely enough that you saw that the page you put up showing the interagency loans and marlins, okay? And you've got somebody like Fonda, for example, is finance director. She's finance director for the city. And then we've got some money over 4A and we've got some money over 4B and so forth. We've got some bonds and so forth that involve multiple entities. And we've got typical municipal finance where we do the best we can at the beginning of the year and come up with a estimate of what it's going to take to load or what it's going to take for voids or whatever it's going to take for whatever, and we miss the mark. And I've indirectly or directly been involved in municipal finance since 1968. And the agency I started this at was the San Antonio River Authority. They have a book that's throughout my cell. They freely have each department set out their money beginning of the year, where they think they're going to go with that money and what it goes for. But they also know that they're going to make adjustments to those accounts as the year progresses. And regardless of their best, best guesses, they're going to have to make budget adjustments. The economy changes, they're going to buy a new vehicle, whatever it is. So, when we had the coliseum with Tom as our comptroller, we were trying to get ourselves from the position that you correctly averred we were at last year, which was when we went from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year, we had the issue of the ending balance, the beginning balance. We talked enough about that, where you know what I'm talking about. The problem for us last year has been that we spent most of the year because of the computer, because of the green sheets that the auditor used for making his appropriate adjustments. We spent most of the year getting Tom up to speed to where he could begin to give us a monthly report. And just as Tom got up to speed to where he could give us a monthly report and we could give it to Jim Miller and say, here's what we've been doing on account A, it's over, or here's what account B, it's under. Just as we got to that point, Jim, Tom decided he found better employment, okay? But the object of the budget is that every month we would see what the projection was for the year or-
Compared to actual, shouldn't it, sir?
Whatever it was. And that it's over or under and we need to make some adjustments, okay? And while the charter may not require or may authorize the manager, may authorize somebody to do something, good accounting practices, in fact, that government accounting standard board that I stood where you are and said we need to adopt, requires that we make those adjustments as we go, which means we need a monthly report to us about how the year's flowing along, whether it's month nine or month six or whatever it is. And as necessary, we make adjustments as we see if items are either exceeding or under. And if they're under, they're great, maybe we end the year on that account with an under. But there's got to be a continuing process where the council sees where we are during the course of the year and has the opportunity to make those adjustments. And Tom could just never get quite to the point of making those monthly statements current with us by the time he left. And I'm saying this too candidly because I was probably more on his tail to get us, take that step and get us to the monthly reports, maybe than Andy or maybe Andy was ahead of me, but we were trying to get to where the council could see each of the items in the budget and what the current amount was for that item and what adjustments might be appropriate. And I'm not going to sit here and try to make the case that we won't make adjustments. I don't know any lit organism, including here in my pocketbook, that don't have to make adjustments as times advance and cause circumstances to change. The budget by all of the people that I read, and I'm a member of the Government Officials' Finance Association, not because I want to be, but because I have to deal with you and this body here in the coliseum, is they say that they expect at least quarterly adjustments as amendments. If you can keep it down to monthly, it's great, but most organizations can't keep up with monthly adjustments, so they make them quarterly. But at least you get the report, you make the adjustments, divide into categories, and you hopefully at the end of the year know what you've made adjustments on and your auditor has a council record as the year goes forward of saying on X date, item four, A, B, C had an increase, we moved from A, B, C to D, F, and G, whatever amounts, and we did it for whatever purpose. Auditor then has the trail to go back and say, okay, did we book that like the council authorized it? So, we have some ways to go, Jim, and I'm not here trying to varnish this. We have a ways to go to get the monthly reporting monthly and to get the adjustments at least quarterly to get ourselves in a position where that is something you can look at and you can see. I hope that's an explanation that makes sense. You're saying exactly what I have been asking for and the point of the differences in the numbers. And hence my question is what procedures are being put in place today in the way of financial reporting and to the council of current numbers and to allow the council to make budget amendments so that we don't go to the point that we are at today in the 11th month of a fiscal year or in the, I guess it was July was the real first financial report presented to this council nine months into the year, which to me is, if I were an elected official and the fiduciary agent of these taxpayers, would be going literally insane because I'm taking on that legal responsibility. And my question is what procedures are being put in place? Will there be monthly reporting that we can expect? Will we be able to see these online? Will it be quarterly? Will there be quarterly budget adjustments done by the council and is that policy in place?
Jim, let's really focus on the budget, the 2012-2013 budget. Procedures, we can talk about it at some other point, but let's frankly talk about the budget, please.
Let me just answer that, there, please.
Go ahead.
I think we're doing good right now on the questions that are being asked. Sherry Pollak, Fonda, and a young lady that we hired in Tom's spot as a comptroller, comes with tremendous experience and is specifically going to be tasked with that. Monthly reporting is extremely hard to close books by the end of the month. You have 10 days, the average is five to 10 days by the time they're able to close and give a report. She prefers to do quarterly, but she can do a monthly handout to the council. This is where we're at, these are the expenditures that we have at this point. We're working on all that. Policies and procedures are going to be in place. The one thing that we need assistance on is if we get bombarded with a million other things we're not allowed to do or basic functions of that. And that's the only thing that I ask, is we've made strides and it's been an effort between the citizens and the council to get from where we used to be to where we're going to head. And that's the reporting, the accounting, the budgeting process have been the same for a number of years. The new auditor has come in and requested that we create new accounts and book the numbers the way that they're supposed to be. There wasn't anything wrong with the previous way it was done, but it was not best practice. If you throw all your money in one big pot and then you just pay here and there, it's harder to keep track. The way that we've done now, thanks to everybody, is that now it's easier for us to track if we have accounts on the street maintenance tax. If we have an account for just parks, but it takes time and every additional stuff other than just the normal work that I'm assigned, anything above that detracts from what we want to get. And if that's an area that we want to get together, then we need to focus on that. Do we have time?
Oh, and I wanted to call us, the girl's going to have a meeting. Has he filed?
Yeah.
And I'm doing it on the record, he filed, and I guarantee you, he's spending these $10,000 of taxpayers' money. When all he had to do was say, I'll take the 40,000, but not one. None of the council members called us, city manager, city attorney, till after the, after work that they filed the lawsuit. We could have missed three consecutive meetings according to the charter. Three consecutive meetings, but no, what they did, instead of Mr. Rosenberg or Mr. Aja, they called him and said, hey, look, what is he going to take? Not one person called us to avoid this lawsuit. We didn't even know it was a lawsuit. And I talked to Mr. Rosenberg the day he filed the lawsuit, what are we looking at? I'll get back with you. Never got back with me. And it's just, it's just, you know, a waste of taxpayers' money doing this lawsuit and then you do what? And then you do what? You just miss it. You know, I'm glad that the mayor's going to move on for everything and I hope that the new mayor that comes in, the new council that comes in, we can move this city forward. We're not trying to delay any business, any anything. We're going forward. But I guarantee you, he struck that sports complex offer there this week, but I guarantee you, he'll pack on the agenda after these meetings. But you know what? If that's so, all they have to do is put it on the ballot. Let the people, there was a petition-
Right, right.
-to put it on the ballot. There was a petition to put it on the ballot, that the people wanted it on the ballot. And what are they avoiding, going through FDIC, going this way, going that way, going around taxpayers? Put it on the ballot. I put it on the agenda, put it on the ballot in November. And let the people, I think it's a little too late for that. But let me tell you, I was elected to serve the people and I'm here to serve the people. And y'all want my number, call me or anything, but the city hall has got to change. We have to change here.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.